We are going to be starting the city council meeting for today.
Roll call, the city council meeting of Wednesday, August 7th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. Council members Flores, member Brzezinski is absent, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon.
All righty, please stand for a moment of silence and then, following the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of July 17th, 2024, and bills for payment on August 9th and 16th, members Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores.
I would like to remind the audience that we will break for a public hearing at approximately 9:30 a.m. So we will be starting today with, no, hold on, I'm sorry.
Mayor Schember.
Yeah, unless the mayor's in the middle of the presenting. So Mayor Schember?
Yes, right here. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Good morning to all my city council colleagues, at least six of the seven of you are here. I enjoy working with you and look forward to continue working for many, many years to come. My team and I are now in our seventh year in office. My presentation today will be brief and at a high level, but Lisa Gomorsal, who's here with me, will provide much more detail later this morning after the city council meeting ends. First today, I want to remind you that everything my team and I do is based on two things. First is our six-word mission for Erie, which is build opportunity, restore hope, transform Erie. Second is our two-sentence vision for Erie and Erie's future. That is Erie is a community of choice. We celebrate our rich cultural diversity, our welcoming vibrant neighborhoods, our world-class downtown and bayfront, our excellent education for everyone, and our abundance of good family-sustaining jobs. My team and I work hard, really every day, to bring, to continue to make this mission and vision more real for Erie. I want to talk to you very briefly today about the financial report for the first six months of 2024. You have a total of 12 pages, which contain the five reports on the city's five major budgets. The first eight-page report is on the general fund, which is by far our largest budget. You will notice the first page that both our revenue and expenditures are down $3,348,157. Most of these, most of this is the result of the difficulty hiring. Fortunately, we will be able to reduce the appropriations from fund balance in the amount of $842,489 from the water lease prepayment fund that we will use to balance the 2024 general fund budget. You can see that $842,489 on page two, line four, under the projected July through December. You can see more detail on the revenue on pages two through five. A quick way to review that section is to look at the last column for major variances over what has been projected in the 1231 2024 budget, which is shown in the first column. There is much that can be talked about in the eight pages of the general fund budget, but I'll leave that for you and Lisa Gomorsal later this morning. Now, let's move to the four other budgets in the last four pages that you have. First is the sewer budget. As you can see, the sewer fund has a deficit projected for this year, which is a negative That is relatively small deficit, it's only 1.4% of the total budget, which is $27,229,246. The revenues are less than the budget, mostly due to residential charges coming in less than budget, and due to increases in the cost of supplies and equipment. The Rattellis rate study is almost complete, and we look forward to meeting with council to review their recommendations. Second is the refuse fund. As you can see on that page, there is $140,263 projected surplus, however, this will not cover the probable increase in salary and other expenses next year. In order to cover costs and maintain capital, it will be important to implement incremental annual increases. Now here's the good news. We expect to see no increase in, first, the golf fund, which was stabilized by the decision to change, to make a change for the best weekend spots, and there will also be no change in the stormwater fee, which we are building up to handle emergencies and to proactively maintain our stormwater infrastructure. Now, as I look forward, I want to make you aware of three positive things I'm expecting to happen in the city's budget in the years ahead. First, I expect no increase in real estate or income tax for at least one more year. I hope longer than that, but at least one more for sure. Second, we will continue to raise city revenue by attracting more people to live and work in Erie over the next six years. Specifically, my goal is still that we increase the city's population by 10,000 people by 2029. For instance, the number of employers and employees has been on the rise since 2020. For example, in 2020, the city was home to 3,061 employers. In 2024, we are currently at 3,501 employers working in the city. That's a 14.4% increase. And third, I'm very happy that the CRIS is now moving forward. This will help us bring more jobs and more people to Erie. We have to submit a good application, and if the state approves our application, this economic development tool will not only help us bring more jobs and more people to Erie, it will bring us $10 to $15 million every year to invest back in our community. These funds will be used to develop the 130-acre footprint in the city's urban core. Finally, I remain committed to being open, honest, transparent, and accessible in everything I do. With you, I want to be that way, and with everyone in Erie, including when discussing the city's budget. Please call or approach me anytime with any questions, concerns, or any suggestions that you may have. So that concludes my overview of the 2024 mid-year finance report. You will get more, much more detail on this report later this morning from Lisa Gomorsal. Lisa and I, though, will be happy to answer any questions you may have right now. We look forward to presenting the 2025 budget to you, probably in about two months, and we look forward, and we are working with you, want to work with you, to create the best, most productive 2025 to 2029 budget for the city of Erie. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I know you're getting it for the first time right now, so it's probably hard, but...
Mayor Joe, could you please repeat? You said 14.4 increase of employees here at City Hall?
No, of employers in the city of Erie.
Oh, employers.
Yeah, we went from 3,061, and now we're at 3,501. So, you know, again, that's up 14.4% in about three years.
That's new businesses, pretty much.
Correct, exactly. And there's, there's many more coming, too.
Nice. All righty, I think we're done as far as questions. Council has the mayor and administration's information if they have to reach out, then they know how to do that.
Absolutely.
I'm pretty sure Lisa has all of us on quick, um, quick dial at this point.
Absolutely.
But we look forward to discussing more. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
All righty, moving on, is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? I'm seeing no one in the audience. Is there anyone here to speak on a repository? I see and hear none, so we will be moving on. I would ask the media to please line up on the left aisle facing the stage, and citizens to line up on the right aisle to avoid confusion, and then the public can start speaking for five minutes. Please list your municipality in which you live, and that will be on the right side of the room for you. I'm seeing no citizens rising to speak. Are there any citizens here to speak today? Are there any citizens here to speak today? I see and hear none. We will be moving on. Lori?
Do you want to go into the public hearing?
You said, do we want to go into what?
The public hearing?
We can. Things, I mean, unless we have to wait. Do we have to wait?
It's advertised at 9:30.
Okay.
Says approximately.
Okay.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16453, official ordinance 41 2024, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $13,500,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for the UPMC park upgrades and clubhouse to be completed via cooperation agreement with the Erie County Convention Center Authority acting as a sub-grantee. Pass-through funding is provided from the Pennsylvania Development Assistant Capital Program grant, which is RACP. Sponsored by council member Shaw, seconded by council member Nelson, the council file ordinance bill number 16453, and known, and now known as official file ordinance 41 2024, be finally passed by city council. Members Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council pass official file ordinance 42 2024, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16454, an ordinance amending Article 309 to increase the fees for a license under the ordinance and/or to increase the penalties for a violation of this ordinance. These amendments will provide enhanced compliance of mechanical amusement devices with the city and/or will provide further protection to citizens and/or the community. Sponsored by council member Nelson, seconded by council member Titus, the council file ordinance bill number 16454, and now known as official file ordinance 42 2024, be finally passed by city council. Members Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council pass official file ordinance 42 2024 by yea six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16455, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Erie, the city determining to incur lease-rental debt evidenced by the guaranteed revenue note in the maximum principal amount of $471,795, to be authorized and issued by Erie City Water Authority in connection with construction alteration and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about this city, including but not limited to the lead service line replacement project, Phase 5, and paying related costs, fees, and expenses, specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as a guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority approving the four maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances. Sponsored by council member Shaw, seconded by council member Nelson, the council file ordinance number 16455 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16455 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Okay. Can I?
Motion to move to new business and a backhaul business.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Okay. Moving on to new business temporarily.
Motion to move on to new business?
To move the balance?
Oh.
Motion to move the balance. Okay, motion move the balance.
Set to read five and six.
I need a second on that.
I'll second.
Any other separations?
I want to separate the age transfers, just to have a discussion before or after we vote, however that goes.
The first one of the transfers?
Yeah.
Or did you say all? Any other separations? I have five, six, and transfer on salaries. Moving the balance of the agenda, council members Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and President Flores. Number five, sponsored by council, Witherspoon, seconded by council member Shaw. The power, the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute a towing agreement with McMillan's Towing and Transport of 2342 Warful Avenue, Erie, 16503. The term of the towing agreement will commence on the date of approval by city council for a term of four years with provision for a one-year extension. McMillan's Towing and Transport will be, will provide city towing services for the Bureau of Police for the city of Erie per codified ordinance 52704. Discussion, or do you want me to read them both at the same time?
Why not? Yeah, go ahead.
The second one is for Eddie's Collectibles of 1039 West 18th Street, and it's the same thing, a four-year term with a provision for a one-year extension. Eddie's will provide city towing services for the Bureau of Police of the city per codified ordinance 52704.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a lengthy discussion in our caucus regarding these two, and my position has not changed. There was a third RFP, which was submitted by a white female, which classified that individual as minority business. We were also informed that there was another minority that received the contract. However, the third contract is a small business. We were informed that the powers-to-be do not feel that this individual can provide the services at a level that we may be accustomed to. It's a small business, I think, two, maybe three trucks. The analogy given was if we have several accidents, different parts of the city at the same time, can this small business provide the necessary service? My position is you give this small business the opportunity. You can put it in the contract. If that person cannot handle it, you do what we always do, you call on help. There's no difference if we had a situation in the city of Erie and we needed state police help, we called them. I would love to place a motion on the floor, Madam President, to table the award of these two contracts. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? Or do we have to?
Do we have a second?
Or do we have a second?
With a motion to table, there would need to be a second.
Okay.
It's a non-debatable motion, so we would have the discussion on the vote. There would need to be a second. If there's a second, then you would vote on that, and if there's not a second, then you would recede the vote on these two contracts.
Do we have a second for council member Witherspoon's motion? Seeing and hearing none. Does anyone else on council feel the same as council member Witherspoon?
Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, council member Tyler.
I think that there were some excellent points that were made here. I do understand, you know, the capacity that we were talking about and just the intensity that, of the needs that may sometimes arise. My heart is absolutely with a small business who, who if, might not have an opportunity to, to, to reach if they're not included in opportunities such as this. However, I was understanding that the RFP has, has laid out with two contracts being guaranteed, and, and from my understanding, if we were to, to go back on this now, that we would have to essentially redo the whole RFP process. I might be understanding that incorrectly. I do think moving forward, when we, when we are looking at this, that we need to be more inclusive of the smaller businesses so that they have an opportunity to build up and to reach this, and that there isn't really a reason why we couldn't do three contracts. I know it would be, add more complications, but I do think that there's a way to do this. But I also don't want to delay in making sure that we have, have the services that our, that our offices are going to need when they're out doing the, the duties that they're carrying out right now.
I would just like to comment as well, you know, we want to give opportunity to the smaller businesses, but if they're not capable of the need of the city, I can understand why we are hesitant. But my hope is that if they, those two contracted towing companies are overworked, then they will reach out to the third business that was interested, because I know that since the weather has gotten warm, we have had an increase in accidents, we have had an increase in the need, and I don't want to go back on what we're capable of right now to accommodate, but I definitely want to give new businesses opportunity so they can see that we're welcoming and we're inclusive. So I understand the internal conflict here. Any other discussion? I'm seeing and hearing none. Lori, go ahead.
Voting on the resolution for McMillan's. Council member Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon.
No.
Flores. Resolution passes, yea's five, nays one. Voting on resolution number six for Eddie's Collectibles, council member Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon.
No.
Resolution passes, yea's five, nays one.
I believe we have to pause.
Okay. This takes us to the public hearing. Anyone that's to testify needs to stand and raise your right hand, and the stenographer will swear you in. Is that Jake and Heather? So do you want, do you guys want to stand and raise your right hand? Anybody that's going to testify for or against the public hearing?
Do you both, would you raise your right hand? Do you both swear or firm the testimony about the case? Is the throat, the whole throat, and nothing but a throat?
I do.
There's a third.
Thank you.
There's a third in the back.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first one is a request of proposed amendments to Articles 2, 3, and 6 of the city of Erie zoning ordinance to amend screening language throughout the ordinance and also define specific screening and off-street parking requirements for short-term rentals.
Good morning. I'm Jake Welsh, chief zoning officer for the city and secretary of the city planning What's being presented today is a recommendation from the planning commission for several zoning amendments, several amendments to the zoning ordinance. The planning commission has been working on reviewing the entire ordinance, but several areas specifically over the past several months, including reviewing of permitted uses in residential, commercial, industrial, and waterfront districts, the current lot, yard, and height requirements, off-street parking requirements, short-term rental provisions, and clarification of screening requirements. All of these areas have been evaluated to look at the use locations and standards, identify and eliminate potential development barriers, and also clarify and correct ambiguous or outdated language. These amendments have been developed with the planning commission in consultation with the zoning office and the solicitor's office, as I mentioned, over the past several months. We believe the proposed amendments will promote flexibility in accommodating various land uses in the city's zoning districts, reducing administrative barriers, and enhancing development potential and investment throughout the city. Also, as a side note, the city zoning ordinance was recently codified into the E-code system, and so there were some modest formatting changes that were, that took place during that e-codification process, and those are part of the amendments that are being recommended as well. Things like renumbering some of the sections, for instance. I would entertain any questions at this time.
Is there anyone else to speak at this part of the public hearing on the zoning amendments? You could come up, state your name, please.
Thank you.
And I have been working with the city for several years. I have a short-term rental in an R1 zoning district and working through the new zoning ordinance and what that would entail to receive a short-term rental license. Went in front of the zoning, zoning hearing board after that was determined, and what was sort of a stickler for my property was the screening ordinances that were sort of the ambiguous language that Jake referred to. We have looked at the property, when I came in front of the zoning hearing board, they said that they could not give me the license because they could not change the wording, they had to enforce what was there, and I had letters from neighbors on either side that they did not want any screening between their properties and my properties, but they could not make any exception to that. So I had been in contact with saying, I'm all for the screening if that's what the neighbor wants, you know, a fence or bushes or whatever it is from the property next door. However, if I were to put up a fence or need to know exactly where it had to start and end, like I would, for instance, would not be able to have a plow service or, you know, things like that. So I'm looking for, my suggestion was making sure that the screening regulations are great, but maybe there's an option for the neighbors to be able to say, I want this or don't want but maybe there's an option for the neighbors to be able to say, I want this or don't want this, because in the city, there are very unique instances with driveways and yards and things like that. So I don't, I read the proposed ordinance changes, some of it I still don't quite understand. So I'm just commenting in general that that was the only, the screening regulation was the one that just was a little bit hard on my particular property.
Does anyone in council have any questions?
Yeah. So is there, will you be screening in your backyard? That's the, that's the, I, I'm not asking for picture evidence or something, and I've been to a lot of zoning hearing boards to see some of these examples. Where's the issue with screening? A side driveway that can't be screened in?
Well, first of all, with the way they were written originally, we just didn't know where it had to be. Like, did it have to start at the back of the house? Did it have to go around, like, my guests do not use the backyard. My backyard's behind a garage they don't even have access to. So like, where the neighbors are on the right, we have concrete that goes right into my neighbor's driveway. My neighbor uses this much width of my driveway with my permission. If there's a fence there, like, her driveway becomes three feet narrower. She doesn't want that there. And both of the neighbors, you know, I talk with all the time, they have my cellphone, they're like, you know, don't want that. On the other side, if I were to erect a fence where I would think reasonable screening regulations would ask to, to prevent a neighbor's privacy from, they come out on their back porch, and if I, a guest was on behind my house, sitting at a little table, they would see each other, that I wanted, if I put a fence there or bushes, then I have to hire a snow-blowing service. Like, I could not have a plow truck get back in there if I, if I put up a fence on that side. And so when I spoke with the owner, they're like, no, we're completely fine. You don't, the people don't even come outside back there. So, you know, like I said, it's just, I like the idea of saying to the neighbors, if you want privacy screening, by all means, I should be required to provide it to meet that regulation. But if they don't want it, then, you know, and if it was a change of transfer of property where a neighbor moved and they transferred property to somebody else, maybe it was like, oh, it's given that you have to provide it unless they say I waive that request or something like that. So, you know, just as, and I know, in, I'm not even like in where the streets are very tight. Like, there's just certain situations where I don't know even if they come out with very specific screening regulations, which is a whole nother issue, of what they actually want the screening to be. Like, if that's just going to, in a city situation where these properties are, if they're ever, it's ever going to be specific enough to apply to every scenario. So if the council and the zoning board and what I, my hope would be that they're keeping the purpose of the screening regulation in mind and allow for that purpose to be what drives the decision. Because the purpose is, if I'm a neighbor and I have short-term rental guests next door, and I'm out on my deck and I don't want to see them, then that should be provided for me. But that's not going to happen in every case. So that was my comment. How I answered your question.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else on council have any questions or concerns?
I have a question for our legal department. If I want to put a fence on my property, do I need permission of my neighbors?
No.
It's just a common courtesy to ask, or I don't have to ask?
I think it's a, it's a wonderful common courtesy to do that. We don't require that. I mean, I know that, I don't think we've had it here, and maybe it's occurred, but in some municipalities, there have been instances where people intentionally put up fences that are offensive to offend their neighbors. That's, that's when it becomes more problematic. I have not seen, I'm sure it's happened in some way here, but I haven't seen that here in the past five, six, seven years. But it would be a nice courtesy, but we don't require it, and we can't require it. You're allowed to do what you want on your property, in essence, as long as you comply with the rules.
Do we have an ordinance to say what type of fence you can put up, or how high the fence could go?
We regulate height. I believe we also do regulate height. Yeah, there's some.
Home, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Jake can answer.
All right.
I do have questions.
Go ahead, Tyler.
They're going back, so when I'm looking at the definition of amending the definition of a family, it says not more than four unrelated persons occupying a dwelling unit, living together and maintaining a common household. I was just curious as to how the number four was selected in this. As I'm kind of thinking out, I'm just curious, like, so if we have, for example, with the rising costs, we see a lot more younger people moving in together versus starting a family early on, maybe they're buying a house together. So if we have a housing capacity that could house, has six rooms, is that not allowed to happen if they come together? Or what if we have immigrant families that are coming together? So I'm just very curious as to why we're capping that.
In R1, so in single-family residential areas, the short-term rentals are available to single families. You can't have multiple families coming together. That's, that's the, yeah, that's, that is a cap on it. That is a regulation.
So this, this definition only applies to the short-term rentals?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I mean, but also.
You can't have more than four in a rental unit either?
Jake's.
That aren't family?
Yeah.
Thank you. I can clarify that. The, so the definition of family currently, it's, there's several types of families. One is what you would typically think of, related individuals, and there is no cap on that number of related individuals that can reside in a single-family dwelling. The other, the other issue would be unrelated individuals. And right now, it's at three, and we want to increase that to four. And part of the rationale for increasing from three to four, they're both very common numbers as far as other municipalities and, you know, the cap on the number of unrelated individuals residing in a single-family dwelling. In Erie, as you well know, we have several universities, and there are many homes that are four-bedroom homes, and there are many kids that get out of the dorms and they pair up and they want to, you know, live together. And so we have a lot of circumstances where folks are looking for four-bedroom apartments. And so it does become an issue as far as three versus four. Three is, in my opinion, on the restrictive side, and so four would be much more accommodating for these group, group-living arrangements. And that would apply citywide.
I guess from, I'm just thinking about some of the, just some of the individuals that I work with. Some of them are pairing up two to a room because rent rates are, and stuff are going so high. So I guess for me, I thought even the number four was too restrictive. I was trying to think bigger and wondering why we stopped at four and not like, like six. That's where my train of thought was going.
Yeah, and again, we did look at other municipalities and kind of what those typical standards are for single-family dwellings, you know, because that definition does apply citywide, including the R1 districts, you know, which is your low-density residential district. We do have a rooming house use and definition that is there to accommodate homes where you do have more than four unrelated folks living there. And the rooming houses are not permitted throughout the city, but we did want to expand on the rooming house availability also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers?
Yes, so you're talking about rooming houses. So we've extended that area before it was just in certain parts, but now the, it has
Right now, some of the recommendations that we've made have been, the use may have already been permitted in that district, but it was permitted as a special exception versus permitted use by right. Essentially, the difference between a special exception use and a permitted use is, is there are conditions set for the use, operational conditions that must be met. Under a special exception, you present that information to the zoning hearing board for approval, which requires an application, an expense to the applicant, waiting for the scheduled meetings. It's, it's kind of an administrative barrier. The operational conditions are already in the ordinance, so regardless of how it gets approved, it'll, it'll operate appropriately. So some of the recommendations, including, I think, for the group home, I'm just looking What we are suggesting is to remove the group home from the special exception in R3 to a permitted use in R3. So that does make it a little more amenable to go through that approval process. And also add it as a permitted use in R2.
Can you, can you point out, can you help describe, it's been, it's been told to me that special exceptions aren't special or an exception. Can you, can you explain it for council, exactly how, exactly what values special exceptions bring to the table?
Well, our solicitor could certainly speak to that. Probably the, the reason that that was set up, in my estimation, would be that it's a little bit more of a public forum, because it does require a public hearing. The one thing that I've also observed is that the operational conditions don't change. The zoning hearing board could apply additional reasonable conditions on use if they chose to. But other than that, the basic operational conditions are already in the ordinance that must be followed, regardless of the approval process.
The biggest benefit to a special exception, because it is not special and it's not an exception, it's in essence a permitted use provided you meet the specific criteria set forth in the ordinance. But as Mr. Welsh points out, it does require a hearing, and it allows council, or if it's a conditional use, a zoning hearing board, to attach additional conditions necessary to protect safety or protect the integrity of a zoning district. And so some municipalities love it, but it does place a greater burden on the governing body when it's a special exception or a conditional use, either the governing body or the zoning hearing board, and it can create some inconsistency. So if it's something that we want to allow, it's probably easier to call it a permitted use. If it's something that we're concerned about, and we need to make sure that on a case-by-case basis it works, then you would want it to be either a conditional use or a special exception, which are essentially the same, except they just go before different bodies.
Jake, I also have another thing that I would like to ask. So let's say specifically on Fourth Street, where the parcels back in the day are small, and there's a demolition, and there is now a small space, but we couldn't build a regular-sized house because maybe there's not enough space in between the buildings now. But now we're saying that we could have a tiny home on that space instead of nothing at all?
Well, the city currently doesn't have minimum square footage standards in the zoning ordinance for any new dwellings, and any existing lot of record can be developed for a single-family dwelling at a minimum, depending on the zoning district. May be able to accommodate more than one unit, as long as those setbacks are, are being met. But with regards to whether we're talking about a tiny home or a manufactured home or a custom-built, stick-built home, the building code standards are the same.
Before, we weren't allowed, like trailers, manufactured homes, but now we're going to be allowing that?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it that they were not allowed. Any new structure, whether it's manufactured or not, does have to meet today's building code. And so a lot of times, what that does is that does preclude, say, a used structure from being moved and relocated into the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Just, I had a couple, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Tyler.
When we're looking at the lot, yard, and height requirements, or when it's saying, you know, the minimum lots requiring, I do see that there's a reduction in the square footage that's being required, which I think is amenable to what Counselor Schoff was saying around, like, the micro-units or the tiny homes. So just so I guess I'm clear in the understanding that the big, the big barrier there is more around the building codes in and of itself that still need to come down through, that might have the restrictions versus any zoning that's currently on record for the city.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we definitely want to eliminate any zoning barriers. And the building code, my understanding, is Commonwealth has been working on tiny home standards. And there are existing standards as far as minimum square footages of things like a bathroom or bedroom area, and so those would be incorporated into this tiny home standard that I believe they're still working on.
And then in that, and just so, the other clarifying question is, the requirement to have a primary residence would not be placed upon a tiny home, because that was my understanding, is that the accessory dwelling in a tiny home, those are two different types of structures.
That's correct.
And so that the tiny home or the micro, whatever we're going to, whatever it ends up being classified as, is not necessarily going to have the same requirements to have a primary existing structure for it to be built.
That's correct. That could be the principal use of the property.
And then the other one just around, and I had brought this up in caucus too, just around the parking requirements, is just how that may be prohibitive to, to the structure of tiny homes if they're still expected to have so many parking spaces per, you know, dwelling or unit. And I think that that, that then falls under the purview, though, of zoning. How many, how many required parking spots there are per square footage?
Yes, off-street parking requirements are, are in the zoning ordinance, and we have, we've reviewed those as well and looked to do things like, one of the biggest things is adding the statement that shared parking is allowed, which reduces the burden for particularly commercial developers to have to put in all-new parking for a new development when there's already existing parking in place with adjacent business owners that they could use a shared parking area.
I think that maybe, as I'm thinking this through, one of the barriers that may, may come in, into place when somebody goes to build a tiny home is just.
Sir, I have a hard time hearing you.
One of the things that may come into place, or the barriers that I'm seeing then, as we talked about in caucus, is that the restrictions around, or the requirements around parking may be prohibitive to some who maybe want to build, like, several of the units. That there wouldn't be enough space if they had to have a parking spot. But if you, if you're saying that there's the ability to share, that could be something that we address them to.
That's true. And any existing lot of record that formerly had a home on it, if a new home would be placed on it, I don't believe they would be required to provide additional parking to what was already existing.
I have another question after Dr. Tyler is done.
I just have one, the only other question that I have is just to help understand the, when we're looking at the definition around group home and group home care facility, it says not including facilities for the care or treatment of persons released from or under the jurisdiction of a governmental bureau of corrections or similar institution. When we're looking at, for example, children maybe who are adjudicated, or youth who are adjudicated dependent versus delinquent, so they may be dependent from nothing that they've done, for the simple fact that they're abuse or neglect, is this, would that be prohibitive to, you know, foster parents or other groups who maybe have four or five children, or if there's an entity that wants to build, so they have like the foster families who are living there, for kids who are adjudicated dependent, not delinquent? Would that prohibit?
No. The. The, and in looking at group homes, group care facilities, and we also have a custodial care facility use and definition that does accommodate court-ordered placements and things of that nature, we, what we really wanted to do was make sure that those three uses were delineated and specified, so that there is, so we can apply the ordinance uniformly.
Thank you.
Jake, we have some homes in the city that are landlocked, where, like, let's just say Fifth and Sixth Street, and there's a home in the middle. If that home were to be demolished, would someone be able to use that property to build another home, landlocked as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
But you have to factor in someone might outbid whoever might want that piece of land. Because it's in the middle of a piece that they don't have, you know what I mean? In the middle of a block? So whoever that company or entity is that's slowly buying up that land might outbid whoever just wants to buy that land. That's a factor that you have to consider. The resident might not get the chance, because slowly in the Lower East Side, people are getting offers that they can't resist for certain spots.
All righty, is that everything for the hearing? I believe so, so we will be moving on.
Anyone else to speak about this part of the public hearing? Okay, the second part of the public hearing, a request for local designation of the Erie Federal Courthouse complex located at 17 South Park Row in the City of Erie as a historic structure per the provisions of Article VII of the City of Erie zoning ordinance, historic resource protection.
Good morning. My name's Heather Olson. I work in, for the city, in historic preservation and planning. And Jackie Spry, our director of planning, she's going to be clicking through a few of the slides as I'm presenting some information. I'll try and keep this light and bright, as I know this is a big schedule for today. So, the request is for local designation of the Erie Federal Courthouse complex, which is located at 17 South Park Row in the city. And the HRC, the Historic Review Commission, as well as the Planning Commission have reviewed this application and nomination. And I'm presenting this as a historic structure. This application was prepared by Matthew Falcone. He's an HRC commissioner, and it's been approved by the HRC and Planning Commissions in recent According to the City of Erie zoning ordinance, Article VII Historic Preservation Section, or Historic Provision Section, the particular nomination type that this would fit into would be historic structure. And on this slide, you'll note that the request for structure is defined by three landmarks, which are now interconnected. Earlier in history, throughout history, in the 19th and 20th century, they were individual buildings. And so, in that they are interconnected, and I've been on a tour of all three buildings, and through them, all facilitated by interior movement, that is the reasoning behind the nomination for single structure. The Commissioner, Matthew Falcone, has been in touch with the federal courthouse contacts. He has the approval letter. They're very much in favor of this nomination, and he's been in close contact and dialogue with them. I also notified them recently, and they were very happy that this was going through city council. On the next slide, you'll note the proximity of the buildings. The building in yellow to the right, which is the east side, is the original library, built in the late 1800s. The blue structure is the federal courthouse itself, which is from the 1930s, built as part of the New Deal, the WPE program, in 37, 38. And then the pink structure in the lower left is the Baker Building, which was associated On the next slide, you'll see how the facades and the aesthetics of those architectural styles associated with each building is very different. So, the upper-left building, which is the Erie Main Library, was constructed in 1888. On the next slide, you'll notice that this is an image of the interior of the library, and it was designed by the architect Alden &amp; Harlow. Of note, a prior partner in this architecture firm out of Boston area at the time, was Longfellow, and that would have been Henry Wadsworth, Longfellow's son or nephew, I believe. They split, and Alden &amp; Harlow stayed together, and facilitated business in Pittsburgh area. So, this particular architecture firm did a lot of noteworthy work in Pittsburgh, including the Carnegie Libraries. And they were known for, they were known for their styles in Renaissance revival, as well as Romanesque revival-style architecture. Since the federal courthouse has taken ownership of this building, they have done a magnificent job of preserving the interior, including the frescoes, the staircases, the floorwork, the statues, the paintings. It is 20 times nicer than the photo, which is shown up there. I will also note that the space can be viewed publicly, so anyone can go in and have a tour of the space, upon working through clearances right there at the courthouse. Notable, and the reason for the Erie Main Library being considered as part of this nomination, is the fact that the architects and their significant role to our local education and cultural history in Erie, that is the basis for this portion of the nomination. The second part of the history in the nomination, the architect was Rudolph Stanley Brown, and a notable point on this is it was the second building on the site from 1937, and it was part of the Works Progress Administration and New Deal part of our history, and that provided jobs which aimed to build great bridges, roads, and cultural artifacts. And then the last building on this slide, which I'll speak to, is the Baker Building. Many of us know, and had friends and family who shopped there, and it was associated with commerce. It was the third typo building on the site, and it was commissioned by the Baker family. On the next slide, this outlines the major, the major works of the architect Alden &amp; Harlow at the top, and these are the points associated with the zoning ordinance, Section VII, which outline the supportive basis for the nomination of each of the three substructures within the structure overall. So the first is based on the fact that it's the work of a notable architect, and it also embodies a distinctive characteristic of style, type, and period, which is Renaissance revival. I should also note that that building is listed on the National Historic Register. The second building on the site, the U.S. Federal Courthouse, meets the zoning ordinance qualification for historic designation, under the section that it is, embodies distinctive characteristics of style, type, and period. So, long linear horizontals, repetition and symmetry in windows, and just a clean, sleek exterior, which was very horizontally focused. That's iconic of that particular style in the 30s. And then the last building, the criteria by which it meets the historic ordinance section of code, is that it's representative of broad patterns of development and heritage in Erie. It's also associated with persons of significance to our municipality, which would be the Baker family, and it also embodies distinctive characteristics of style, type, and period, and that would be streamlined, modern. And so, that building on the next slide, there might be an image of how the focus is on the horizontal, that particular style of architecture is focused on the addition of metal, curved windows at corners are often iconic of that particular style as well. So, this slide outlines the criteria by which the HRC and the nominating party, who was Matthew Falcone, who prepared the application for the HRC, this articulates the sections by which it meets the historic resource protection section. It meets 705B, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And on the last slide, it's just a summary, that we, as an HRC and as staff for the city, have approved it thus far, and we request the city council approve a request for the historic designation nomination of the Erie Federal Courthouse complex, and amend the zoning ordinances and map to reflect this historic designation nomination as a historic structure in the City of Erie.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments about the historical designation for these three buildings?
I'm very excited about this. Thank you very much, and thank you to Matthew. We need to continue to preserve iconic buildings. I forever would love to continue to see that round building, and I'm glad it's not going to be torn down in the future. I wish that we had saved some of the buildings that have been torn down throughout the last several years. So, thank you very much for all your hard work in preserving history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this? Part of the public hearing. I think that concludes the public hearing.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Okay, resuming where we were in new business, we have a separation for a transfer sponsored by Mr. Whiterspoon, seconded by Councilmember Shaw, that there is a transfer from the office of the mayor to the Office of Communications and Bureau of Parks and Rec. The amount of $23,260 from salaries out of a 401 account to 101, $15,000 of that to salaries, and $8,620 of that to salaries. Discussion?
I just wanted to comment that, you know, I'm not in favor of us giving salary increases in the middle of the year. Budget time is coming up soon, and I know that this has been a touchy subject throughout my tenure on council, that we've been asking continuously that if you have salary increases, please make sure you notify us at budget time. So I'm going to reiterate my unhappiness with it. It's not that I'm saying that people don't deserve to be recognized, it's just that I know that in this city hall, we have employees that have never been recognized, don't have family sustainable wages. And I know when budget time comes, I want to see those employees in those departments speaking up about their needs and wants, just as much as every other department does, because at this point, only if you're loud enough are you getting recognized, and that is not adequate, in my opinion. So I'm not in favor of it, just because I know that there are some salaries that are questionable on whether or not they're family sustainable, and if they're going to attract new people to fill these positions once people leave. And that is what we're having a hard time with, is filling positions once people leave, because we're bending over backwards to accommodate people's wants and needs that are the loudest. So I want to make sure that when budgets come forward, we're hearing from those employees and departments that know that their employees deserve to be recognized adequately. And that's all I'm going to say on that. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I had a challenge with all of this, and I did talk or communicate with the administration, and I understand there are some situations where we have emergencies in our families, emergencies in our businesses, and we need to address them accordingly. I want to make sure that we're doing the deep dive at budget sessions to make an entire equity study with all of our employees and departments, I'm sure, which will be brought up at budget session, to make sure that everyone is valued. As a family, you know, people sometimes have to step up and do more in their share, and, you know, they are given the love pat on the back. But I understand that, you know, there's a need for things. I'm really not happy about the transfer. It's just something that I was struggling with. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Go ahead.
Just to kind of clarify, like, at the end of the year, we always get an agenda, I guess maybe it's the beginning of the year, where they sort of reconcile a whole bunch of transfers like this, usually oftentimes, and this has been precedent for a while after the fact. So this is, this is, I think, a step in the right direction. We're getting some progress here as to how things, you know, with the responsibility that council has over the budget, and how the ordinances and the charter of the city gets executed, this is progress, so I'll happily point that out. You know, I don't think we've quite gotten to the point that council is governing to the degree that we have responsibility for, but I think this is progress in that we're voting on it in August instead of later in the year after the fact. It's just after the fact of the raises. So, we're getting there.
Slow and steady. Anyone else have comments?
Yes.
President Whiterspoon?
I've served over 20 years on city council, and I've heard this conversation many, many times throughout the year. I spent 22 years in the corporate world with Pennalec. We have received annual incomes, increases, and because we did exceptional work in various departments, in mid-year, we received an increase, or you can call it a bonus, or it was a thank you on behalf of corporation. I spent eight years with the Audit General's office, and when I came in, my four other counterparts were at a certain salary level. I came in at a higher salary level, and because of that, the Audit General brought them up to where I was, because they had been there for maybe eight, nine years at a certain level. And when I came in at a higher level, all of them got increases. I started out with 12 counties, ended up with 19 counties, and I didn't get an increase because of the additional counties, nor was I a man... because of the additional counties, nor was I mad, nor was I upset. I was glad to have a job. We need to look at, and let me put it this way, I'm looking at the budget we approve, the administration is not going over budget. It could be any line item that they transfer. That's their staff. Their staff know what they have to do. And I think it's a fair move of what they're doing, and saying thank you to the individuals who will be doing extra duty, and we are saving money. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other comments?
Voting on the resolution, members Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores.
No.
Resolution passes, yeas five, nays one. This takes us to committee reports.
Okay. All righty, we're going to be moving on to committee reports. Chuck Nelson wants to start. Go for it.
All right. I've been getting updates on this because the press conference is happening, and so I have to do double duty on this. Starting in 10 minutes, there is a flash sale of 35% off for the next 48 hours for your direct flights on Wednesdays and Saturdays to Orlando from the Erie Airport. You have 48 hours, starting in 10 minutes, to book those with Breeze Airlines. Press conference is happening right now, and, and so if I keep checking my phones during it, it's getting updates from the airport liaisons that we've appointed over the last couple of years. So we now have a second airline at the Erie Airport as a liaison to the airport. You know, this has been something that we've been, I think, wrestling through and watching for a while, and I'm not sure if I'm, that may be violating some sort of government law of pointing out flash sales with corporations, but for the next 48 hours, there's a sale 35% off. Flights start in November. So that's, I think, the most exciting thing from any of my committees in the last two weeks, and, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
All righty. Kathy, would you like to go to finish off that side of the ring?
I'm room free. Thank you, Madam President. I attended AmeriMasala July 20th. It was wonderful, as well as Toons for Tots July 21st, which was wonderful. The Erie Water Works is very excited about getting the lead out of the gooseneck pipes, and they are in phase five of their program to eradicate lead from the pipes. We are doing well and above other cities throughout the United States, and other cities are looking to us as a model. I just am very excited about getting rid of the lead and knowing that we have water that is safe to drink, and I get mine right from the tap and am very thankful about it. I do want to, like, a little blurb. The Authority provides water, drinking water, to approximately 63,000 direct customers, and since its inception, the Authority has undertaken a comprehensive capital improvement program to rehabilitate and replace the city of Erie's aging water system, as well as expand and upgrade the system within the surrounding municipalities. So people have got on board, and we have expanded our water service, and that's an awesome thing. The Authority continues to leverage its GIS system to provide mapping and data in the design of water, main service line projects. The Authority has saved significant costs on the various projects being undertaken and expects to continue these savings on future projects as well. And they had an audit and were successful in their audit as well, so a lot of good things are happening. They also involve community outreach, because they have Gene Day and their Gene Day donations, nearly raised $3,500 for local charities like the Second Harvest Food Bank, American Heart Association, Booker T. Washington Center, Meals on Wheels, the Erie City Mission, and the Upper Rim. I attended the Monday, July 22 rooftop project at the Soldiers and Sailors Home, and July 28, Life Through Music was playing at the Nate Levi Park. Tuesday, July 23, attended the ONE Pension Meeting. Thursday, July 25, was glad to see Aaron Kerr and all of the students that are helping out with the groundwork trust and providing services in our neighborhood communities, and Edison Nicholson with his youth leadership. They're starting a service club this year at Erie High School. That was all a part of the mayor's conference July 25. You can get the full thing on Facebook. I attended the Project Neptune feedback session at the Blasco Library, and people were able to speak, and I did as well. The Downtown Partnership had an event on July 28 or 29 with their public space. The Smith Group came back and talked about their plans for the Bayfront, Perry Square, and Griswold Park, and different areas in that area, and very happy to see in their plans for comfort stations at Perry Square and the Griswold Park. There is public restrooms already available down at the Bayfront area of the, by the barber shop there, and down where the Doppin's Landing is. That one is specific times when they're open. The Blues and Jazz Fest was wonderful. I'm glad everybody was able to have a wonderful free concert this past weekend. The Erie Housing Authority Scholarship Awards were given on Monday, July 22, and that has been going on for, I think, 20-some years now, that students, young and old, are receiving scholarships for their education. So that's a wonderful thing. I participated in the walk that was for Larry Meredith Day Celebration on Monday, and I'm sure Mo Troop will expand on that. It was a wonderful day all the way around, and would like to thank everyone in IT who got us up and running during the cloud strike, blue screen. They made sure that the police and the fire were taken care of first as our public safety was needed. So thank you very much for everyone who works so diligently. I consider Erie City Hall almost like a community service job, not just the police and fire, since we are servicing the community in the Treasury Department, and we come down and talk to the people in code, in engineering, and traffic. It's definitely a work of love and commitment and dedication to our Erie City, and I think we're all brothers and sisters as part as one big family, just trying to do our very best for the city of Erie. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw. Would you like to go, Troop?
All right. Thank you, Madam President. I do want to start off by, some of the stuff I'm going to say is going to echo what Councilwoman Shaw indicated. I do want to congratulate the people from the Blues and Jazz Fest. Matty Walker and the rest of his staff, they did, they did a great job bringing that back to Erie. That's definitely a huge part of the summer in Erie. Many people look forward to it, so it's a great success to have that back. I also attended the, one of the 814 days at Nate Levy Park. Life Through Music did a great job. Many of us are familiar with Mr. Corey Cook, who organizes that. And one of the people we had performing that came and performed, Ron Williams, who's the lead singer of One World Tribe, who, you know, I'll be happy to see them next week on, at Celebrate Erie as a, for their 30th anniversary. They were probably one of the biggest bands ever, really, local bands ever come through Erie, so that, that should be a great night at Celebrate Erie. Also, as, as Councilwoman Shaw said, had an opportunity to attend all the festivities, festivities for Attorney Larry Meredith, who passed away last year. He was my uncle also, as many of you know. He was attorney around Erie who did lots of work for people. He was also the first African-American on Erie City Council. He served on many boards and different things like that. His life was basically going to be described as, like, service to others. That day, just to give you a little recap, they had something called the Poor Man's Walk, where they walked from the courthouse to City Hall, which signified something that Larry did often, I guess. They also unveiled a bust in his honor that will, I'm not sure exactly where that will sit permanently, but there will be a bust to commemorate his life. Also, thanks to council for renaming a portion of Downey Ave, Larry Meredith Way. Just, just to name a few people who I think deserve credit, Anita Meredith planned all that stuff the whole day. She lives in Atlanta, but actually had a team of people she's working with the whole time. That'd be his, like, his youngest sister, my aunt, my mother, Carol Troop, Dr. Paris Baker, Pastor Tyrone Clark, the CAP organization, Elks Organization, the JFK Center. JFK, I think they renamed their gem after Larry, because he spent 40 or 50 years volunteering, helping, working. A lot of times, his office was located there. I did see Councilman Witherspoon there, Councilwoman Shaw there, and Councilman Ed Brzezinski. So thanks for attending those. And then finally, I just want to say, on Sunday, as a personal, I'll be hosting an event called Blues for Shoes. Probably like 2010, I had an idea. As you know, I'm a local musician. I thought, like, how can musicians get back to Erie? And so we developed an event called Blues for Shoes. It's going to happen at the Big Bar this year, on this Sunday, August 11, at 4:00 p.m. Basically, we have four full live bands and three acoustic acts, and then all the proceeds that are raised at the event, we have used over the years to purchase school supplies, which we give away free to kids in the community. So we've been doing that now for about, I guess it's, this will be the 14th year for that event. So that'll be this Sunday at the Big Bar, starting at 4:00 p.m. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyler?
Okay, thank you. Just as a quick update, the COVID numbers, COVID continues to be an, an issue, and the numbers we're, we're starting to see go back up as college students come back and students get ready to head into school. Let's just be cognizant and be aware and be mindful. So if you aren't feeling well, please wear a mask or stay home if possible. Not to forget that next, or is it, I believe it's next week already, yeah, Erie Gives Day, August 13th. So if you've got a favorite nonprofit, make sure that you are, you are giving to help them on that day. There's various ways to give, online, over the phone, or dropping off a check in person. You can go onto erigives.org to see who all the nonprofits are locally, or for more information on how to do that. The Erie Parking Authority met on July 30th. So in, in addition to the regular board items, they reviewed the findings of the 2024 Physical Conditions Review and Evaluation Report, conducted by Desmond Design and Management. The report covers nine ramps totaling 4,449 spaces, eight surface slots around 503 spaces. There were several findings in the report that will assist the EPA, the Erie Parking Authority, in prioritizing various needs and reports that they're going to be working, or repairs that they're going to be working on. This is a follow-up with, with the city asking to engage in dialogue and discussion around when city events are going to be pulling revenue due to vendors being downtown or stuff like that with, with the Erie Parking Authority. The Erie Zoo Board met on July 30th. They're making great strides in their efforts to get reaccredited. The staff continue to work diligently there in providing for the animals in the communities. I'll be arranging a volunteer day, hopefully the second or third Saturday in September, and I'll be reaching out to all local electeds so that we can come together and, and help in their efforts. The EMTA Board met on July 22nd, and again, they're continuing to strive to serve Erie County through the bus routes and lift services. They have several employment opportunities, so if you are interested, go over to their website at ride-the-dash-e.com. A little plug for Companions Table, my nonprofit. We have started a, we just wrapped up a round of True North, and we'll be getting ready to start another program of True North on September 3rd. This is a free resource for any queer youth or young adults living, to help them live more independently in Erie. We do things like teaching life skills, helping them find a job, helping them find apartments, learning how to cook, clean, and build a support system, and you can sign up at companionstable.org. And then finally, so this summer, I've been working pretty close. I try to keep my reports bipartisan, but this one's going to be a little partisan, so I apologize. Working diligently with the Democratic State Party to increase awareness around the upcoming elections. I would, I've been honored to serve on the Standing Rules Committee for the Democratic National Convention, so getting to serve at a national level. This committee has played a critical role in ensuring the process to select a new presidential candidate, with everything that we kind of watched come out. So the next council meeting, I will be at the DNC in Chicago. I'm really looking forward to doing that and getting to serve on the Rules Committee in that capacity. I've also been working pretty closely with local organizations to increase voter registration and assist in creating a voter guide, not on who to vote for, but how to vote and where to register, and so making sure that we have a more engaged community. And then this weekend, I will be heading to Harrisburg for a training with local electeds across the Commonwealth on various projects that they're working on within their cities and townships to bring that back to Erie. And because I will be, not be at the next City Council meeting, I will make sure to get my report to you, Madam Chair, so that you have something to, to, to report out for me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'm not going to belabor the point on Attorney Larry Meredith. Councilman Troop covered the entirety, but I can say that Attorney Larry Meredith, who I refer to as LD, on two occasions, he was my campaign manager, and on those two occasions, we were successful. Also, each time I was sworn in to council, LD swore me in. He was the only person that was doing the swearing in that didn't have to read. that didn't have to read the script. I said, Larry, here's what you have to read. He said, I know it by heart. He told me to stick it in my pocket. And I did, and he didn't miss a word. Dear friend, and he's missed. Update on Spoon's League. After the situation we had at the court initially, I got fed up. We call them knuckleheads. And I was going to take the rims down. And let's say alumnis from the league who have grandkids playing called, stopped by, and convinced me otherwise. As a result, our Erie Police Department, Brother D of the Blue Coats, Roosevelt Benjamin, who represents MOC, Men of the Community, the administration, and members of council. We all got together at some point in time and we decided to keep it. According to Brother D, the league is an icon in our community. And up until this last incident, we have never had a problem at the courts. The community know that the court is a safe haven. To prove that, the situation we had where one young man was jumped by a three, that young man ran to our courts. And at that point, we protected him. That was a safe haven. That's what we do. We have set some rules. It's on our Spoon's League and our Facebook page. We will inspect all book bags. If you don't want your book bag inspected, don't show up. And if you do, we're going to ask you to leave. Also, if you've got a hoodie, don't have it on your head. We aren't going to tolerate that. God knows why these kids wearing masks. They come to the court with masks and hoodies. That's trouble to me. So you can't come with any mask. So we laying down a pretty tight law. We got rained out Monday, but we're back in business tonight, Friday. And then I'll lay out the playoff schedule. I know football started and they're getting ready to go back to school. So I'll look at those two schedules and schedule around. But other than that, 99% of the kids are good kids. And it just, it just takes one or two to cause a problem. And so we're going to be all right. We met with, we being myself, the administration, officer Phil Phelps. We're going to have a three-on-three basketball tournament on the 17th, I believe on North Park Row. PAL kids versus Spoon's League kids. We're just about ready. We have everything that we need. We figure if we can do it with just those two organizations and we're successful, we feel that it'll grow and open it up through registration. Hopefully next year, make it citywide, similar to when Hoop It Up brought their organization into town. Finally, I met with my volunteers and we decided to create a Spoon's League Hall of Fame. Most of our kids aren't playing any sports in college if they go to college, but they're good kids here in our community. And so hopefully by next year, we'll have our first banquet of community Hall of Fame. And we want to make it a big thing. I mentioned it to several businessmen and women. They're on board. So as of now, it doesn't look like finances will be the problem to make it work. But I think that'll continue to bring our community closer together. The only problem I anticipate is a lot of the kids saying, I was better than him. How come he went in before me? And that's a good thing. That's a good thing. Madam President, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, I will report on the fact that our next council meeting will be held at the JFK Center. It's the last meeting in our summer series that we tried out this year. We will have our meeting at 6:30 at 2021 East 20th Street here in the city. I also wanted to mention that next weekend, we have our big celebration in the city for Celebrate Erie. That event is going to be the 16th, 17th, and 18th. It's a great time to spend in the city. Hopefully, our weather holds out for us so we can all have a good time. Our summer concert series is slowly wrapping up, but you can still attend a few Sunday events that are planned and listed on the website and on our summer event calendar that we have in the front of the City Hall and on our website as well. We have our Monday movies in Perry Square still going. There's two still planned in the series. Next movie is August 12 at 8:00 p.m. It is The Princess and the Frog. And then we have August 28 at 8:00 p.m. That Thing You Do, which was filmed in our beautiful city so, so long ago, I think it was over 20 years, but it's still a great movie to watch. I do appreciate the presence of the officers in Perry Square. I've heard that there's been groups of kids gathering and when the officer walks through, they kind of scatter. But it's still not as welcoming as we would want because a lot of parents and their kids are nervous about a bunch of kids congregating with no supervision. So might be some things we have to look into for future movies in Perry Square. I also wanted to mention that I have seen videos and footage of a pet alligator that might have been released in our lake down by East Ave Boat Launch. So I know the Port Authority is aware and I know they have signs out, but just be vigilant. We don't need any accidents happening. And for our residents, please do not release exotic animals into our public spaces such as our lake and the Presque Isle or any area that's wooded, because these exotic animals will affect our ecosystem. We currently have goldfish that are taking over our lake, which is an invasive species due to people releasing that fish into our ecosystem. So just let's be very cautious on what we do because every action has a reaction and we don't need to cause problems for tomorrow that we're not even aware will be problems for tomorrow. All right, next, I will continue on by saying, let's continue to keep ourselves safe, our loved ones and our fellow community members safe in our beautiful city. We have a few more weeks left of summer to enjoy, but I'm hoping that the nice weather lasts into our fall because I would like for our kids not to have to do Halloween in snow. So that is something we've been experiencing lately. So let's hope for good weather going forward. And that is all I have to report. I am happy to know that we are still enjoying the good weather and there's still lots of fun to enjoy in our community. Does Ms. Teresa have any reports from the, no? What about our solicitors? No report. Renee from the administration?
I'll try to be fast. Good morning, everyone. Just quickly on the transfers, I want to say thank you and just clarify that those were not simply raises. It was a result of an employee leaving and several existing employees taking on additional responsibilities and being compensated. So I appreciate that. Last night, we had the opportunity to go around a national night out. The weather cooperated off and on and I think we ended up getting to eight events. Several were either canceled or postponed, but it was a really nice night for those that were either able to move their events inside or had some sort of shelter outside that the show could go on. Council President Flores mentioned the 814 Concert Series. So this Sunday at 5:00 p.m., the next one is at Roger Young Park on Buffalo Road and Downing Avenue. And then that will be followed on Monday evening with the Final Sounds of Summer Concert. That's August 12 at 7:00 p.m. at Curry Shell Apartments, 3909 Shaper. And then next week, we'll culminate in Celebrate Erie. Again, that's Friday, August 16 through Sunday, August 18, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We have about 70 performers on four stages. And those can all be found on the celebrateery.com website. We also do now have the maps and schedules printed and have put those in City Hall for pickup. They will also be available during the event at the Info Tent on South Park Row and State Street. The headliners we're very excited about start at 5:30 on the main stage each night. Friday, we open Celebrate Erie on the main stage with The Breeze Band, followed by Ivan Montero and then the One World Tribe 30th Anniversary Show. Very excited about that. Saturday evening at 5:30, we'll open with Matty B and the Dirty Pickles for their 20th anniversary show. And then 6:30 p.m., Wheatus and 8:00 p.m., Jimmy Eat World. And then Sunday night at 5:30, Brooke Surgin are opening for Smilo and the Ghost and then Gabby Barrett headlining. And as I said, all the stages, all the schedules are available on the website and in the map. And then we have approximately 40 small business vendors who will be selling food, art, different things that they've made here in Erie. We're very excited about that, as well as the Chalk Walk. We think it's going to be a great weekend. And as Councilman Witherspoon mentioned, we're going to have, new this year, the PAL versus Spoon's three-on-three basketball tournament, which we're really excited about on Saturday on North Park Row, which will run from about 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So we hope to see everybody there. We're looking forward to it and praying for good weather. Thanks, everybody.
I'm curious to know the three-on-one, like who's versus who?
Did I say three-on-one?
Or?
Three-on-three?
Oh, three-on-three? Okay, all right. Well, that concludes our reading for today.
City Council adjourns at 10:49 a.m. President Flores, Members Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.